Since there is no need for our executive session, I'll go straight into the pledge of allegiance. So there are no special presentations tonight, so before I go into superintendent comments, I do want to let the public know, especially online, that after the business administrator comments, we will be opening the discussion for the public. So at this time, if you wish to type in your name and add your speed to the chat along with your questions, we'll field those questions after comments by the administration. So Steve, Dr. Forte, if you have any comments, please.
Thank you. Not sure if everybody's got a chance, but go by and see the value field. It really looks terrific. It's pretty much done. There's some minor things that need to be done still. The perimeter fence needs to be installed and other little minor things. And also, one thing we weren't, actually, we should have been aware, it was in the contract, but the contract that we maintain the field for until the spring, he's in charge during the fall, and yes, he's in charge of getting it open in the spring. After that, he takes over the maintenance. River View Annex is open, open for business. It looks terrific in there. Can't say enough about how the staff has worked to get all the schools reopened and the way the teachers and students have responded. It's been terrific. And we did, we do have our goals and action plans posted, and I gave it to you guys just so you can take a look at it. They're also on the website. That's it for my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Forte. Dr. Colas, assistant superintendent comments.
Just to add on to Dr. Forte's comments, the first few days were just fantastic. It was so exciting to see the students in the classroom, and I just really felt the energy pick up as soon as we started to see their faces mask turn on. It was great. And I heard some words in the Valley View Battle meeting today at my chair, said to share that, "Let's give the school year the opportunity to be awesome. Don't throw a label or judge on it before it begins. May just surprise us in many beautiful ways." So we ask everyone just to be patient and be kind, and anything that arises, we will address it. We saw far, it's really been great. We did have professional development last week, and our staff worked on all sorts of instructional techniques with the virtual learning, as well as the programs that were introduced for the 2021 school year. And we will have another session on Election Day, November 3rd. It's the morning session for students only, and there will be no childcare in the afternoon due to voting. This concludes Assistant Superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. And Mrs. Goroski, if you have any business administrator comments?
No comments.
Great, thank you. Does the board have any question for the superintendent, assistant superintendent, or assistant chair? Then I will like to open the public discussion at 7:30, 8:00 p.m.
We do have one question from State Police, 23 Highland Trail in Denver. Will you explain the reasoning facing virtual elementary classes with over 30 children in them? Although this may, within the law, how has this served our children and teachers well? How is this effective?
So if I could just repeat the question, the question might have been regarding the sizing of the virtual classrooms?
Totally. The student teacher ratio is the same, similar or same, whether they're in school or out of school, so that's really the number that we need to consider. Even our larger classes have 17 students to one teacher, so there's multiple teachers in the classrooms that are made virtually. And we just have to consider that both of them are going to have needs, and they're different, and so it's not going to lose that way the same. Our in-person classroom has to deal with hygiene concerns, moving back and forth between classrooms, time spent in those areas that don't need to be spent on virtual school at home, so there may be more time spent on answering questions. But we are not, at this point, concerned that it's going to have a detrimental effect, whether it's a larger classroom or not, because what really matters is all the questioning and small group work is really where the individualization takes place. That's still only going to be three to five students in each small group.
So Dr. Colas, if there's a virtual classroom with a size of over 30 children or a number, then there is a second teacher that is in the classroom, like, how does that work? Dr. Colas?
Yes, and some of them have three teachers in there. Some of our staff who are certified teachers who have worked as aides in the past have been hired this year as teachers. They are teachers, they've been in our building for a decade and working with this grade level, so we have multiple teachers in those classrooms.
So for the public, I do believe that just because there might be one teacher on the screen, that doesn't mean that there's multiple teachers behind the scenes helping with that classroom, correct?
Yes, and they're on the screen as well. I mean, multiple teachers are. We do have to also consider that the class sizes are changing. Even just today, we changed quite a bit in one grade level, seven students in one grade level, moving in and out of those classes. So if a problem arises that we see a student is not getting the attention that they needed or not performing, then we'll address the issue at that time. But at this time, moving forward, we're not going to assume there is a problem until there is a problem, but right now, we feel that it's really the small group instruction that makes the difference, and that's going to be three to five students, whether it's in-person or at home. The direct instruction could be delivered to 30 students at one time, but that doesn't mean the time that they are asking questions and working as students is 30 students. And we always said from the beginning, could not even have a virtual classroom unless we had 25 students. So we always knew these would be larger class sizes, but a regular class size runs anywhere from 17 to 30 students in a regular year when we aren't under pandemic, but, you know, we just look at the teacher-student ratio. We felt it was better to have a virtual teacher rather than have the elementary students live streaming. So if they were live streaming, they still would be live streaming with 20 or more students. It's just that some would be at home, some would be in school. We felt that was way more challenging for a first grader to sit on a screen while a teacher is running between students she must keep her eyes on in the classroom and running back to a screen. We felt it was much better to have separate teacher dedicated to those students, and then the in-person teachers.
Mr. Kim, can I just ask a quick question on the follow-up to that?
Sure, please.
Dr. Colas, we don't have any extra teachers that are not in a teaching capacity right now, correct? In other words, we don't have anybody, if we wanted to split that, we don't have the capability from a staffing perspective at this point, correct?
We do not. We are using everyone, including we are paying our instructional aides who are certified teachers, to teach. So everybody is to be used at this time. Next step, we have to sort of, we need to wait the first couple of weeks and let everything settle out, who's going to be in-person and who's going to be at home, because they do have that 10-day movement period. And so I don't want to make any decisions based upon the numbers that are not settled, and I do feel it right now. It's a good student-to-teacher ratio.
Yeah, I agree with Dr. Colas. I do think that we need time to evaluate, and we will constantly, it sounds like you'll be constantly monitoring and making adjustments, tweaks, or big changes if you need to. So, thank you, Dr. Colas.
Currently, there's no other questions.
Great, if there's no further questions, there will be a second opportunity for public questions towards the end of the meeting, which we hope to have a short meeting as well. So if there's more questions, feel free to start typing them, and we will get to those questions at the second open public discussion. So we'll close this open public discussion at 7:44. And we'll proceed with the agenda. Mr. Lohr, if you could take us through old business, please?
Certainly. I would like to move items A, B, and C under whole business. Item one is the treasurer's school monies and board secretary report. There are no education reports, so it's items A and C rather than A, B, and C. And the minutes for the work, for the regular session and executive session from August 10th, as well as the regular session minutes from August 24th.
All set. Any questions or comments? Being that they're not, roll call, please.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes, but I must have seen on C2, the regular session meeting minutes from August 24th, as I was waiting to that.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Lohr?
Yes.
Mrs. Gold?
She's on here.
Mrs. Gold, I did not hear your response.
Yes. I am unmuted.
Ms. Gold, you can speak now.
Yes.
Great, now, under new business, Mr. Anderson, if you could take us through personnel, please?
Absolutely. Objections, I'd like to. Items one through 12 as a block, they include a lot of different new hire, early rotation, retirements, as well as several leave scenario for different staff members, and as well, finally, as student teachers for the 2020, 2021 school year. Second.
Mr. Anderson, I saw the personnel minutes today, and I appreciate you going through that. That was great. Thank you. Questions or comments? Being that there are none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gold?
Yes.
Mrs. Gold?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Mrs. Gold, if you could take us through instruction and program, please?
If there are no objections, I move to approve items one and two. The first item, one, is workshops with expenses for two teachers at Lakeview for the Orton-Gillingham training. And item two is for virtual learning workshop with Meredith Alvaro.
Second. Questions or comments? Being that there are none, roll call, please.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Lohr?
Yes.
Mrs. Gold?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And under finance, I'm going to ask Mr. Lohr to take over for me on your finance, please, as well as any committee comments as well.
Okay, I would like to move items one through, sorry, I tried to page one through nine. Include the monthly current expenses. I would like to note that there is, the other set of checks have not come through yet. And we've got several tuition items. We have child study evaluations, non-resident teacher tuition agreements, the joint transportation agreement for the three routes that we need to have someone, we do not have drivers for. The submission of a comprehensive maintenance plan in the school facilities form M1. We accept the donation of 60 reusable tote bags from the Denver Township Reinstability Committee to the middle school. We accept the grant, the judicial divide grant, the amount of $21,850. We accept the $7,000 grant from Denver Social Services to help prevent the cost of free lunches. And the board accepts an additional donation of various COVID-19-related school signs for American Image in the amount of $745.
Second.
Sorry, hold on a second, I'll cover the minutes in my computer to shut off.
The minutes were just a discussion about the deductible coverage of $100,000, which I sent out to the board for discussion or comments, for the flood insurance, I should say.
Yeah, the only other thing in the minutes was a discussion of the business, sorry, budget to actual, and since the beginning of the year, everything matched up fairly nicely.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Goroski, I noticed that the file CMP 2020, 2021 that was in the drive had three pages, but I have difficulty seeing all three. Was there contents in page two and three as well, or is it supposed to be intentionally blank?
It was blank.
Pages two and three were blank, okay. If there are no further questions or comments, roll call, please.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Lohr?
Yes.
Mrs. Gold?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Gold, if you could repeat your response, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we will move on to the Good of the Cause. After the Good of the Cause, we will open up the public discussion for comments. So under Good of the Cause, any comments for additional committee reports? Missed operations on the agenda, or was there nothing to be voted on for operations?
Nothing to be voted on.
Great, thank you. So for Good of the Cause, committee reports, correspondence, discussion items, or any other comments that the board would like to share?
I have something for operations, since I got the mic off on putting forth a resolution. I apologize for the little bit of a delay to get the report from our committee meeting, but the committee believes grounds, you know, focused on a lot of the COVID issues with the air quality and things like that. So if you get a chance to read reports, just want everybody to know that the air quality test was performed by New Wave LLC at all district locations, and the air quality test was satisfactory. We also had an HVAC inspection by ATC Heating and AC LLC, and inspected the RTU HVAC units and classroom unit ventilators in all the district buildings. So company made any need adjustments, and all the equipment had at least 20% fresh air intake. And the ventilation units are also operating, and all students, staff occupy certain areas, including air conditions are operational in windowless interior areas. Exhaust fans, rooftop units, and window ACs are also checked and are functioning satisfactorily. And I think it's really important to note that over the last six years, we've invested $2.5 million in HVAC repairs. That's a lot of money. It's been a top priority for the district, and we've just done an excellent job at getting that, to getting the HVAC system in good shape. Another good news, River View Annex, we hired a Class B officer, and that officer is on the job, and it looks great. As mentioned in previously reports, we have a pending order on security glass indoors. That's indicated in the past, it's a problem in the country getting instruction materials manufactured and delivered. The other item to talk about, two things, the value field was just absolutely phenomenal with that new sign on there. I didn't put this in the report, but we discussed irrigation system, and Steve sent out a picture of that, so we can see that. So I make sure that the water is going to be optimum. We discussed having a rain show up, and basically, your central rains, you don't need to be watering the grass at that point, overwatering can be just as bad as underwatering. And we also talked about getting some closed field signs made up, because even when you have them there, all of a sudden, you know, you ride past a closed field, and people are playing on it. So we want to make sure that we keep everybody off the field until it's ready for use. So that's somehow we keep an eye on. Transportation, we had an ad hoc committee meeting, and administration pointed out that the police department and the town administration were very supportive and helpful in launching the first week of school. The parents were also quite supportive, as well as the students. The overall, the first day of school went very well. There's some fine tuning to be done in Valley View, and that's been taken care of. So, no, it's, who knows, everybody involved with getting this first day of school up and running the first week, it's gone very, very well. And that's a testament of the quality of the staff we have here. The other thing to mention, it was in the finance report about the, looking at the flood insurance, and, you know, it was a discussion, no decisions were made, but one thing I saw on the packet today was the school facilities, the value of the building insurance. And I brought up at the meeting that we should just revisit the replacement value of the building. I mean, insurance, you know, it's doubtful our buildings will be turned to the ground or you have a tornado might come through and wipe them out, but you want to make sure we are insured at replacement value of those buildings. And for example, you just take a look at River View School here, the building replacement value is almost $8 million. And we've had talks about an addition on River View at $10 million. So the question I would ask is, why does it cost $10 million to put an addition on a building that's only worth $8 million? So something to be revisited is the value of the bus garage and all the other facilities, make sure we're insured to value.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cass.
Yeah, Mr. Kim, if you don't mind, I'd like to add on to Mr. Cass's comments, just, I have been so impressed with the adaptability of the students, the staff, the parents, really everyone. The Denver Police Department has stepped up tremendously, dealt out with a lot of the drop-off and changes. We significantly changed the amount of vehicles we have dropping off at schools, the teaching staff, the custodial staff, the IT staff, the transportation staff, and really, everybody has just stepped up tremendously this year. I can't tell you how impressed I've been. And everybody keeps asking, "How's it going?" And I say, "I don't know, my kids come home happy every day." And it's amazing to see the way our children are so resilient and adaptable, because it's just, it's normal to them now, what we do. And today, the first day they got on for their afternoon classes, they, I was in meetings in my office at my house, and they got right on and logged themselves in and did it themselves. So everything has not been completely seamless, but everything I've seen that we've had a small issue with has been dealt with very quickly, which is understandable. I mean, the amount of change and the lack of major issues speaks to the amount of planning that was done over the summer. And really, you know, a lot of the thanks goes to the parents in this district. A lot of them have kids in multiple districts with multiple different plans and rules and morning checks, and they've been awesome. We know it's difficult sometimes to follow everything that we're trying to put out, but we are trying to get as much information out as possible, and we appreciate everybody's patience and adaptability as we get the year started. And knock on wood, it seems to be going well from at least my kid's standpoint, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, good action. We're Good of the, we're regular Good of the Cause now, or we still don't give any stuff?
Oh, I think I blumped all Good of the Cause.
Okay, so I just don't want to skip ahead.
No, please.
I just jumped ahead, sorry.
So we had, New Jersey School Boards have the Legislative Committee meeting Saturday, of course, virtually. Legislative Committee gives us an update on what's happening down the trend, what school board is advocating for. So there was a big event this week. Governor Murphy signed the health insurance bill that Sweeney had been putting forward and had been kind of stuck since March. This is a replacement, Chapter 78, it's actually going to be called Chapter 44, I guess. There's going to be some very significant changes for us. Initially, it looks like there'll be some decreases in premiums, because they're going to be eliminating some of the state plans. It's going to be, they're going to be winter weekend down to Direct 10, Direct 15, and something called the New Jersey Educators Health Plan. So there'll be three plans to start, and then by next July, they're going to be adding in the Garden State Plan. The idea is that these plans are going to be less expensive, both for the employees and for us. They had bandied around savings of somewhere between $800 million and $2 billion. Those numbers seem to be creeping down. So one of the things they did is they put a floor in there, and they said that the plans have to achieve savings of at least $300 million. So that's helpful. But I want to kind of let everybody know, there's a big change here, which we really do need to be aware of going forward. Up until now, Chapter 78 has specified that teachers pay a percentage of the premiums based on their salary. What's going to happen now is that it's going to be totally based on their salary. So if the premiums go up, it doesn't matter. Basically, they're going to be paying based on their salary level. So we have to be really cognizant of that. That's great when premiums go down, but if the premiums go up, their contributions are not going to go up by the same amount, they're going to go up by how much their pay increases are. So it's a sea change to how the benefits and the payments are going to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Colas. I'd like to echo Mr. Cass and Mr. Anderson as well. I think that, you know, the township, the police, the parents, the teachers, the students, everyone has really got to chip in. All the administration, Steve, or Dr. Forte, Dr. Colas, and Mrs. Goroski. I mean, for example, the transportation committee was put together because of the shortages of bus drivers, and that quickly morphed into how do we handle the bus situation when we start school under this new era that we're going through. So that's just a testament. I know that Dr. Forte commissioned, or, you know, Dr. Forte and Mrs. Wagner commissioned a committee just to figure out how to open school, starting in May or June. So I think that this is, you know, the administration has done exceptionally well, especially compared to some of the stories I've heard on other districts. So thank you, everyone, for contributions and patience and everything else. As I said in the last meeting, I do think that families do have to evaluate, even as we see the dust settle, to evaluate how to move forward, you know? If there are still questions about whether or not the district is doing enough, which, you know, we are simply going by state guidelines. Of course, if we want to do more, we would, but everything is under constraint, whether it's not enough money or not enough time. So I do think that individually, parents should evaluate as well, whether or not they want to continue to send their children, or if they want to send their children, you know, if you're finding, just make sure that the administration or the principals know ahead of time. And if families do wish not to get the phone calls early in the morning, every morning, please, please do fill out those questionnaires on the phone. The nurses are doing a phenomenal job of taking temperature for children who do not, whose families do not submit information, just that five or six question through the app, or however many questions it is. I would like to not have a phone call that early in the morning, but, you know, so be it. I understand why it's needed. So for the few who are on this phone call, if they can pressure the other families who are not filling out the surveys, so that the nurses don't have to take their pictures every day, then we will see less of these phone calls. So, but then, if there's no other further questions or comments, I will open up public discussion and comments at 8:04 a.m. Did Mrs. Gold have comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Did Mrs. Gold have comments? Oh, I'm sorry. So I'd like to, Mrs. Grossi, how do I handle this if I want to ask Mrs. Gold?
Uh, you can tell Mrs. Gold to make any comments and then open it up again for public comments.
Okay, so I will have Mrs. Gold contribute with questions or comments, whether it's committee, how much she wants to make, or other comments that she'd like to.
Thanks. Not really much to say. I want to also thank the school, the teachers and the staff, the administration. It's trying, it's been a trying few weeks for all of us, but I appreciate everything. And so far, the school year is going better than I had expected it to go with virtual learning. So thank you.
Mr. Kim, just to add one more thing?
Yes, please, Mr. Anderson.
And just to tag off of your comment about not only filling out the form in the morning, but I know, I appreciate the administration going back and kind of reformatting it a little bit. I think it's a little more specific as to what should hold your child home. And I would plead to every parent, as a parent in the district, to please, if you need to keep your kid home, keep him home. I know on many times, including myself in the past, maybe I sent my kid when they had a little sniffle, or maybe they were, you know, 12 hours without a fever. Just with everything going on, just keep him home if you have to. I just ask everybody, if we all make that commitment, I think it'll hopefully avoid any major issues we have with health in the future. So.
I agree. And we can get through the school year with, hopefully, very little issues. So thank you, Mr. Anderson. If there are no further questions or comments, then I will open up public discussion at 8:06 p.m.
Currently, there are no questions or comments. We'll give it a minute.
Sure, we'll give it a minute and then... I do want to thank the public for staying with us. And of course, if there are any further questions, you know, please send any one of us an email or the administration an email, of course, or the principals an email. So I will close open public comments at 8:07 p.m. And since there are, there is no need for a second executive session, we'll adjourn. Thank you. Then we are, this meeting is closed. Thank you. At the vote, all in favor? Any nays, abstentions? Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.